I'd like to call the Human Resources Committee to... Is that word?
Order.
Order, thank you. It is 6:33, July 10th, and we are in the Nashua High North Boardroom. Does somebody have the book? We can take roll. Dr. Murataki?
I'm here.
Mrs. Ziem. Mrs. Ziem has another commitment. She's at My Brother's Keeper. And Mrs. Odin, I'm here. And the alternate, Ms. Hoensie?
Here.
Thank you. We need a non-public?
We do.
We need to go into non-public under, is it RSA 23?
A329?
2A?
Or...
RSA. Under RSA 91A:32B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Roll call. Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin, yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
We are now in non-public session.
You all ready? He's good.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes. Dr. Murataki?
Yes, I move to seal the minutes under RSA 91A32B.
Second. Roll call. Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin, yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adjourn. We have to make a recommendation.
To nominate...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Move to nominate Laurie Rothhouse as the interim Director of Adult Education for the 2017-18 school year at a prorated salary of $66,815.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. It's Monday, July 10th, 2017. It is 7 o'clock, and we're in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. We'll begin this evening with a roll call, please. Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Odin?
Here.
Dr. Murataki?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver's here. Mr. Halliwell?
Here.
Mr. Mosier. Mrs. Ziem. Ms. Hoensie?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Farrington?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, and I sent everybody... Well, I started to send everyone an email this afternoon, and I did everything except hit Send. I hit Send tonight around 5:30. Mr. Mosier, for everyone's benefit, fell at home Saturday night, broke his hip, had surgery Sunday, and he's still in the hospital at St. Joe's. I spoke to him for just a few minutes this afternoon. He seemed to be in good spirits and all, but he wasn't sure just exactly how long he was going to be in the hospital, so he certainly won't be at Finance tomorrow night.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
I didn't complete them. We have Dr. Mosley, Dr. McK...
McKinney.
Sorry, I'm stuttering. Ms. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Donovan, and that's it. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine, because I was going to say, well, let's go through the other two things, and then we'll come back to that in recognition. So if we'll continue with the prayer with Ms. Van Twyver, and then Mr. Kaufman, if you'll lead us in the pledge allegiance, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and here I was just going to take a moment because we do have some new people around the table here this evening, and for those few people we have in the audience and for people who may be watching at home, we'll go ladies first. We have Ms. Donna Fitzpatrick, our new Assistant Superintendent of Accountability and Assessment. That's decided. We have Dr. Garth McKinney, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. And of course, we have Dr. Jamal Mosley, Superintendent, Chief Executive Officer in charge of everything. Welcome all. And of course, Dan's here. Everybody knows Dan. The consent agenda. Does anybody have anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all...
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Murataki. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did anyone have anything outside the consent agenda that needs to be considered this evening? Public question, comment period, limited items on the agenda this evening. Any public input? No. Moving right along. Dr. Mosley, you get the stage. Superintendent's comments.
Couple things. I just wanted to say, first of all... I'm going to get the hang of this. First of all, I just wanted to extend a very heartfelt thank you to the Nashua community for just really making myself and my administrative team very, very welcomed to this community. I don't know where to begin, so if I forget anyone, I totally apologize, but just thank you. We have been here five days, and so the report will be short and sweet. I will share with you what I have done, and then I'll share with you what the Assistant Superintendents have done. I've made sure that I've tried to get out to as many schools as possible, just to make sure that I know where they are, but also to put a face to a place. I think it's important for the superintendent and his leadership team to get out there, meet with teachers, parents, and principals, just to see what's going on, and just to have those personalized conversations. I started that probably about two months ago when I was in the district. I am proud to say that Dr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick have continued that. When they were here, they set some schedules up for themselves to go out and to get into the schools and meet with all the principals, and they're going to do the same when the teachers return, to really just get a sense of what's going on. So that's what we have started in these five days. I say started because we still have a lot of work to do, and we're very sensitive to people's schedules and vacation time, so we're very pleased with that. The other thing that we talked a little bit about is around subcommittees. So Dr. McKinney will be chairing up the curriculum subcommittees, and Donna Fitzpatrick will be doing the policy. I will be involved in those committees as well, but certainly they will be the go-to individuals for the administrative team to do that. My emails are filling up very quickly, and I'm getting back to people quickly in the communities, and I really want to... in the community, so I really want to say thank you to all of the agencies that have reached out to me. I can't name all of them in my head. Barnes &amp; Nobles, the Boys and Girls Club, I believe. The Y have reached out to me, and those are just the things at the top of my head. Today I attended the Mayor's Divisional Directors Meeting in the afternoon at City Hall. I get a pass. I sort of have to pay for parking. That's nice. So I was like, I couldn't find a...
That's better than us.
So I was a little nervous about driving down... not nervous, but I was like, I'm not going to find parking, and then Tara gave me the pass. So I feel like I'm the most important guy in the world with that pass, I tell you. It's in a minivan. But at any rate, I got a chance to talk with key individuals in the community, the mayor, his leadership team, fire, police, community organizations, and what they're doing in the city, and also the partnerships we have in the schools with those individuals as well. For the record, I am presiding and living in Nashua myself, and my family will be transitioning up in Nashua sometime in early August, if not late July. So that's all that I... I talked about the professional. I shared a little bit about the personal, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of the individuals in Nashua. Thank you for all of the heartfelt emails, and I'm looking forward to an exciting and long tenure here in the Nashua Public Schools.
Board response to Superintendent's comments. We'll start over here and go around. Anybody?
Well, welcome all. We hope for your success. I hope in whatever way we can be to be helpful for your success because your success means success for the school district. So welcome, and you know, five days in and 500 more, 5,000 more to go, however it ends up being.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll reflect on those as well. I am very happy to see all of you here. Congratulations and welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to welcome you to... It's going to be fun, I think, having new faces around here and new blood and everything. It's going to be a good year. I'm quite sure of it. If anything I can do to help you in your endeavors, please ask.
I too. Welcome aboard. Anything I can do, please ask. Directions, restaurants, whatever those things are, okay? Thank you very much, and good luck.
Ms. Hoensie.
Thank you. I too am very delighted to have the new faces and the new leadership, and I am hoping everything will go well and be willing to help in any way I can to make your job easier.
Ms. Odin?
I want to welcome all of you. Thank you for coming to Nashua, and thank you for staying in Nashua, Garth. And as somebody said, your success means success for our district. And our district is mainly composed of our students, so that's what we're all here for. And as you have success with your positions, then our students will be the recipients of your success. Thank you, and the entire community. So thank you for coming to Nashua.
As for myself, everything that everybody else has said, and you know, I have a lot of hope that we can move forward and develop a really good collaborative working relationship between the three of you folks and the board and make some good advancements for the benefit of our students. Garth, you don't qualify to answer this question, but for the other two, which is the hardest school to locate in the city? And for those of you who are watching, I exclude Garth because he's familiar with the district.
I actually went over to Elm Street today, and it was fine getting there, but getting back, there was construction I had to go around, and the flagman sent me into a parking lot. Figure out how to get back. But that was probably the strangest thing that's happened so far as far as getting to a school or getting back to central office.
Is it fair to ask the superintendent, which is the hardest school to find, Dr. Mosley?
I'll tell you the process I've been following. So what I do is I... So I live off of Exit X. I'm not going to share that publicly because I don't want people coming by and, you know, asking me things, so a little privacy there. So what I do is every morning I get up, and I get off at a different exit, and then... So today I started off at Exit 8. And so then I tried to find my way to central office, the back roads of Nashua, and then that's how I kind of bump into schools, so to speak. So I've been using that process, so eventually I get lost in the city to find my way back to Lead Street. So today, as I shared with you earlier, I was down at City Hall, and I used this opportunity to find my way to South High School. So that's what I've been doing.
I thought for sure it'd be New Curls or Dr. Crisp.
I would say Dr. Crisp.
But we'll see. Moving right along. Committee on Budget. Mr. Halliwell, Budget Committee been doing anything?
We have that.
How about Finance? They been doing anything?
They will tomorrow night.
Excellent. Moving right along. Committee on Policy. Ms. Van Twyver.
Policy has not met. Next meeting will be August the 15th.
Okay. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Dr. Murataki?
The committee has not met. We have not scheduled a meeting for July, and we'll probably be meeting in August, but we'll speak with the superintendent before that is scheduled.
Wow, this is still really starting to click here. Committee on Human Resources. In the absence of Mrs. Ziem, we have Mrs. Odin.
Yes, we held a meeting earlier this evening, and from that meeting I have a couple of motions. The first motion is to nominate Laurie Rothhouse, elect Laurie Rothhouse as the interim Director of Adult Education for the 2017-18 school year at a prorated annual salary of $66,815. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a new director, or a renewed director.
Yes. And my second motion is to accept the revised personnel recommendations of July 10th, 2017. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoensie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That's it?
Finishes my report.
Liaison reports? Unfinished business. I... Everybody should have a copy. We have a tabled motion from last week in the discussion of the cell phone policy, DKD, and at the end of the discussion, there was a motion to table that in order to get some more information based on the City Hall policy. And so if we... I think everybody had that information in their packet. You have this packet here that gives you kind of the history of the amendments and amendments to the amendments, and where we were when we finally tabled the motion. And so if somebody would like to make a motion to take from the table... Mrs. Odin?
A move to take from the table, the motion to approve policy, DKD. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoensie. All those in favor of taking the motion from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
No. Opposed.
Okay. That would be... How many do we have here? We got eight? So seven, one?
Six, no, seven here.
One, two, three. Oh, we're missing two. Six, one.
Right.
So we have the motion before us, and as you can see, if I've copied this correctly, we have an amendment that was passed to change the amounts. And then, Mrs. Odin, I guess I don't want to put pressure on you, but you were at a point where you had some... a question about some of the language in the proposed... our proposed policy versus what was in the city policy.
Yeah, Mr. Halliwell had some problems with some of the language that was in our policy that was communicated to us by Attorney Bolton, who thought that the language needed to be in there. And he...
It was about access to usage?
No.
Cell phone information?
No.
Yes, that is...
Was it usage informa...? Okay.
I think that's...
And what I wanted to do is check, have somebody check to see if it's in the city for the policy for the city employees.
Ms. Halliwell?
It is not.
It is not. The city policy says something in part of that proposal, something about checking...
All the language that the city refers to is if you use a city-owned phone.
Right. Mrs. Hoensie.
Thank you. You should keep in mind that this is a policy that was approved by the city in 2014, and I believe Attorney Bolton only joined as the corporate counsel after that date. So this is his... My understanding is his recommendation that that language needs to be included, and this was not a policy that he had any work on.
Okay. Ms. Halliwell?
I don't know whether the... I never saw the response, the written information that Attorney Bolton... Was that in some packet for the policy committee at some point, or it's just...
Mrs. Hoensie.
Thank you. I believe Attorney Bolton attended some of the committee meetings and voiced it, so it would perhaps be in the minutes.
Were there... Well, these seem like very detailed recommendations for what should be allowed, but I have a motion to amend once we... I think Mr. Kaufman wants to say something, so...
Mr. Kaufman?
I had downloaded it today. I didn't bring my computer. I apologize. But it was in the May 16 minutes. There's a direct question between Mr. Fredrickson and Mr. Bolton about this matter, and if, Ms. Van Twyver, you said you have the transcript...
Which page do you remember?
It's about two or three pages in. It's one of the first issues we discussed that night. If I could just say, Mr. Fred...
Anyone else have anything on this particular subject? Mr. Donovan?
Well, there was a comment at the last meeting about the increase in these costs. So of course, since that's my area, I went back and looked, 2013 through 2017. The first year that there was a line item that broke out the telephone, the cell telephone stipend separately was halfway through 2012, so I don't have a full number for 2012. But basically, the increases from '13 to '14 were 5.5%. It was an increase of 3% in '15. In '16, it was a decrease of 1, and in '17, it was a decrease of 4%. So basically, since we've done it, it's gone up $1,000 exactly over a five-year period.
Say it again, please?
One...
$1,000. It's increased for over five years, $1,000.
Out of a total amount of...
The initial number was $28,960, so basically $29,000.
Okay, so do we... Is Mr. Kaufman, are you finding what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think so. Do you want me to just read it?
Sure, go ahead if you want to. Yeah.
Okay, so let me... Let me start with Mr. Fredrickson's comments, kind of sets the table a little bit. Mr. Bolton, with those comments on there, the way those are written, there's search of the phone, and there's some sort of damages incurred by the employee. I think, if I understand it right, they would have the opportunity to come back on the district, right? I mean, we are perceived as a government agency. You have to be careful when you're a private agency versus a government agency in terms of what kind of search you can do. Is that correct? And Mr. Bolton replies, "If an employee consents to a search in return to getting a $50 stipend or anything else," Mr. Fredrickson, "what's a reasonable request? Where's that, Mr. Bolton?" "If this is the policy that's passed, an employee can either subject themselves to this and get the stipend, or not subject themselves to this and not get the stipend. The $50 a month comes with your waiver that you're going to be subject to those... these conditions, if that's what the board decides to do. But if you opt out, then there would have to be some other probably..." Well, it says probably cause, I think it meant probable cause, for some other search to be made, Mr. Fredrickson. "Well, an employee never has to take this. That's their option." Mr. Bolton and Dr. Brown participated and said, "Mr. Bolton, if someone... somebody doesn't opt in, so they say no thank you to the stipend and no thank you to a district phone, and you need to reach them after hours, how would you reach them?" "And you and I have been involved in a few after-hours issues this year, Mr. Bolton." "Well, there may be certain people you want to require that they provide a district phone, and you provide the district phone. Other people, you may say you have to provide us with a home number, or if you're not at home, you have to provide us with other numbers. Or you have the duty every third weekend or whatever, Dr. Brown." "So in your opinion, then, from the district's perspective, the best policy then would be to require certain people to have a district-provided phone, Mr. Bolton." "That is certainly a method that is often utilized, and then if it's district equipment, the district has a right to fully examine it and get and pay the full bill and have access to all that information just in the normal course." At the same... And the same thing would apply to tablets, laptops, and anything else if the district is providing it. "You probably ought to write that down and make it clear, but I think even without writing it down, that would be the accepted interpretation, Ms. Hoensie. What in terms of right-to-know requests would an employee of the district be required to present from the phone because they have emails, et cetera, Mr. Bolton?" "If you've got a district employee in charge of a certain matter, and they retain a record of communication relative to that matter, that's a public document. Being that that's a public document, unless another exception authorizes it being withheld, it could be made public. Now, there are a lot of exceptions. Personnel is one of them, identifying student information is another one, which takes a lot of what you do around here. Then there are things around terrorists and contingency plans and things of that nature. So if any of those things apply, it does not have to be made public. Now, if someone is just talking about schools or school systems in generally, but not directly related to what is in their authority, then that is not a public document. That is just a private conversation. But if it is directed to someone in their capacity as principal of a school, about their school, something within the principal's authority to act, or even the authority to refer up the chain of comment..." It says chain of comments. I think that would be chain of command, "then it's probably a public document, Ms. Van Twyver." "So getting back to the policy, can we actually force them to waive their right to privacy, Mr. Bolton? If you want to make that a condition of getting the stipend, Ms. Van Twyver, I would not want to have that in there, to be honest with you. I don't think anybody, anybody, would accept a stipend if they had to give up their right to privacy for using their own phone. I think, quote, 'shall comply with the request of any billing records and usage information,' unquote, is probably okay, and, quote, 'cannot use the phone for any illegal purpose,' unquote.' Well, I think that would come under ethics. I don't think we need to have that in there either, and, quote, 'all sub... and are subject to all board policies,' in quote, I think is okay." I don't know if you want me to keep going?
Well, I was just going to ask. Clarify anything for anyone, or... I don't want to get caught up in a whole debate and conversation over this. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Thanks. Mr. Bolton's comments at this meeting were essentially leaving it very broad and leaving it up to the board. The board can do whatever it wants, and we hear that mantra, you know, because I guess we can. So the way that information got in there was as a result of originally my speaking with Mr. Bolton, and he later softened his comments at our meeting when he came to appear. Personally, we can do whatever we want. I'm just going to leave it that way. So if Mr. Halliwell said he had some language around amending this, maybe that will add to clarification, and we can move forward.
Well, that's, if I could, that's what I was going to suggest is that, because I kind of like the idea that... the idea that was in this proposal that was withdrawn at our last meeting about striking the usage information. Because I think that as long as we can confirm that through billing records that somebody actually does have a phone that we're giving them a stipend for, anything else that we may, that may be required to have access to through some sort of legal action, we can go through the legal process and, is my understanding, and request those sorts of details. And beyond that, I don't think for just routine operation, month-to-month operation, that we need to be troubling ourselves with that kind of detail about how people use their cellphone. So, I'm not particularly interested in getting into that much detail. Mr. Halliwell, did you have something? I see you're writing something.
Sure.
I sense there's a motion coming.
Yes. So, the line that I had tried to adjust before, but then withdrew because I, I didn't like the whole way it was written. So, it says, under, so, under, at the top of page two of three, it says, all the other lines are crossed out. The only one that's left is, "They shall comply with any reasonable requests for billing records and usage information." It seems to me that, well, let me make the motion. I move to strike that line and replace it with, "The employee shall provide, upon request, verification of an active cellphone service." If I get a second, I'll explain.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Murataki.
It seems to me that the one thing the district should be able to verify is if we're gonna give somebody a stipend for $50 a month, that they actually have a phone that we can call and that they're paying for that phone. And so, as long as that line is in there, it seems like we're covered. Any other information? I read the language, the, there's a, there's a pretty interesting paragraph the first time Mr. Bolton talks about this, where, as Mr. Kaufman alluded to, he basically says, "Well, here, you could do this or you could do that," which is typical lawyer gives you both sides of the issues and then simply, "Well, you decide." So, you know, we're not required to, to look at anybody's billing information. And I think it's counterproductive because it just gets people thinking that we're gonna be making unreasonable requests of them to provide information. So, my idea is, if we have a concern, we could ask them. It's not required that they provide it to us before they get the billing. But maybe it's already, Mr. Kauf, Mr. Donovan's already to raise his hand. So, maybe this is already done. But either way, probably that language should be in there.
Ms. Van Twyver, do you have something on the motion?
Yes, I'd like him to restate it, please.
I wish we could go back because I didn't actually finish writing it all down. But the employee shall, upon request, verify cellphone, an active cellphone service.
Dr. Murataki. Yes, and a question for Mr. Halliwell. So, is it then under the option two, with the wording that essentially requires that the phone will have calling and text capabilities, would that remain intact? Under your amendment?
Option two is the district-provided device.
Right.
Option one is the employee has their own.
So, the option one, the verification, does not require that the phone have text and calling capabilities?
Do they even make a phone that doesn't have text and calling capabilities now?
I don't think so, but, you know, in the policy, they differentiate, they say $40 for a mobile device, smartphone, or $20 for a cellphone. And so, you might want to be able to differentiate as to what service they have.
But I think that's covered by the line I just said.
Okay. Dr. Murataki, are you all set?
I'm fine.
Mr. Kaufman? And then we'll get to Mr. Donovan.
To follow, follow on with Mr. Halliwell's point, I think it's a good idea to verify, in fact, these people have a service. So, would it not make sense for the application part, the R part, which is in here tonight part, that, that when someone applies and requests and fills out the form saying, "I would like a phone," here's the reason, that when they ask for a stipend to use their own personal phone, that at that time, they show an existing bill that they have that line currently with whatever their provider is, and we then can verify? I think that should be, I think it's a good idea and I think it should be part of the application process.
Okay. Well, we're not discussing dash R right now.
You talked in, how were you saying?
That's the implementation, right? But if you're asking for verification of service, I'm just suggesting that, to your point, I think that should be provided at time of application. And you can put that in the policy or in the R, which is a form that goes with this, which we're not talking about tonight. So, I just don't want to lose that. I think they should go together.
Okay. I think it is actually on the agenda. Did Mr. Donovan have a point about verification?
I was going to come to him, he's next. Mr. Donovan, the man that has to make this all work. You, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman, you all set?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, just like to make everyone aware that when someone applies for it, and, you know, having a form is fine, we don't have a form, they contact me via email, but they have to give me their number. And that number is put on a list to be shared with other administrators, so that everyone that has an allowance also has the, the phone numbers of all the other people that have an allowance, which is sort of what brings us all together here. So, that's the agreement. If you're not willing to share your number, then you're not allowed to have a stipend.
Okay. Mrs. Ohensy, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. I, I like your amendment, but also to Dr. Murataki's point, I think the amendment we made last time actually includes language that says $40 a month for a mobile device, smartphone, or $20 for a cellphone. So, I think that implicit in those descriptions are your text and unlimited phone capability.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the amendment reads, we delete at the top of page two of three, the second line, "They shall comply with any reasonable requests," and replace it with, "The employee shall, on request, verify active cellphone service." Is that correct? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. So, now, we're back to the amended amendment. Dr. Murataki.
I like the amended policy. I intend to support it.
Okay. But what we just did was amend the amendment we already had. So, now, we're gonna have to vote on the revised amendment.
Right.
Everyone in agreement? And the amendment is what you have on this page that I left on your desk, the second boldface, Mrs. Ohensy moved, seconded by Mr. Kaufman, restore the paragraph. And that has been modified by the amendment that we just approved to, that we just voted on. I don't have, I do have it. So, Mr. Kaufman?
If I recall correctly, Mr. Halliwell had made an amendment that we just now amended. Is that correct?
No. He made a motion to amend and then withdrew it just before we tabled the motion.
No, but we, I think Mr. Kaufman's point is, so, we already invoked for the amendment that's in black on the first page.
Yes, that has been approved and now it has, that has been amended. That.
No, the next paragraph.
Which one?
This paragraph, the second paragraph.
Oh, you're looking at a different sheet? Okay, but we all have to agree.
There are two, there are two corrections, two amendments to this presented. The first one is your black.
Okay, if I can, let me just tell you the way I see it. There was a motion made at our last meeting by Ms. Van Twyver to approve policy DKD, cellphone and mobile device. It was amended and voted on a roll-call vote, passed six-two. And that amendment to that motion was, restore the paragraph in blue on page one, which says, "As of August of 2017, the allowance will be $40 a month for mobile device, smartphone, $20 for cellphone, and so on." And that passed. And so, that was the amendment to the original motion. Now, we have just voted on this motion that Mr. Halliwell made, which would amend what I just read.
Would amend the portion of the entire, we're back to the main motion.
Okay. If everybody's happy to vote on that?
It seemed like we were gonna vote on something interim, right? But we're back to the main motion, correct?
Okay. If everybody's content with voting on the main motion to approve policy DKD as amended?
Well, I don't.
Everybody know, I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to Mr. Kaufman here.
No, no, it's not so bad.
Okay.
So, the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
And what I, I just wanted to point out, the amendment that I spoke of, that Mr. Halliwell made, was in fact that which set the value. You brought that back into the conversation. So, that, I was two motions back from you rather than the current. So, so that's where.
Okay, so, everybody, I'm only doing this so everybody knows what they're voting for. So, we don't, are against here. And with, if you vote yes on the follow, on the next vote, you will be approving policy DKD as amended by what we just voted on and the addition of the dollar amounts that were added the last time. Everyone in agreement? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At the next meeting, we'll talk about educational topics. Moving right along, we've got the next part of that. Is that, now, we'll come back to Mr. Kaufman. Is there a change that needs to be made to DKD-r relative to what you were talking about earlier?
Well, on Mr. Halliwell's idea, and I didn't know what Mr. Donovan just shared with us, was that if you didn't give us the phone number, you didn't get the phone, if you didn't share that. And I didn't know that that list was widely available within the administration. So, that's all new to me. And now that we have a policy, I don't think I want to go back and change it. But I, I think, given Mr. Donovan's information to us, it seems as part of the existing way he's doing it, he is asking for the number. Should that be included in that request portion of the R form?
It is.
The phone number?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. It's been a while since I dove into this.
All set?
I'm good.
Mrs. Ohensy.
I just have one correction. Under option one, we should reinstate the $20 monthly allowance for cellphone and 40 for smartphone.
To agree with what we just did?
To agree with what we just did.
Okay.
And then cross out the reimbursement to be made at a rate, blah, 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 is the indeterminate part. So, that sentence would leave and the crossed-out sections would come back modified to the rates that we just passed. Makes sense?
Is there a motion to amend in there?
Oh, yeah, I move to do that.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Murataki. Did you get all of that?
Really? No.
Well, if you, if you take under option one.
We're gonna put the dollar values in.
The dollar values are 20 and 40.
Would you please read it as you worded?
$20 monthly allowance, parentheses, cell phones. Strike the next sentence. The next line would be $40 monthly allowance, parentheses, smartphone.
So, there's just two lines?
Right, that's it.
And then there was one, did you say there was one other place that needed to be modified? No, just those two? Okay. Anyone else on the dash R? Dr. Murataki.
Yes, I have a question on the amended version, and this is actually directed to Mr. Donovan. So, if we do this, suppose I have a mobile device. It's an iPad Mini with a phone chip in it. It has a phone number on it, but you can't call the phone number because it's a data device. However, if you insisted on being able to call me as a phone, I could basically get something like a Skype phone account, pay the guys a little bit extra, and there'd be a real telephone number. So, the way that the dash R would look, is there a requirement if I go for the $40 stipend? Do you, does the district have to be able to call a phone number? Or can they simply message my device?
Typically, both.
Ah, okay. So, if I took the $40 stipend, I'd have to basically go ahead and coordinate with whatever data service I'm doing to give me a phone number that could be called.
I guess if you wanted to monkey around to try to do this for that kind of money.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah. Basically, you know, typically, we will make a phone call somewhere in that initial process also.
I, I do know people who don't have technically a smartphone. They have a mobile device, but they jury-rig it to basically allow incoming, you know, voice-over IP service with a, quote, "telephone number," unquote. It's a few bucks extra a month.
Yeah, I'm not sure anyone, I'm pretty sure no one does that here.
Monkey around, jury-rig, all this technical, these technical terms. We're all set? You all set, Dr. Murataki?
I am fine. But most of these people that do this that I know are either students or college professors.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Did we vote on the amendment?
What's that?
Did we vote on the amendment?
Not yet. I was just gonna see, anybody else have anything else? What's that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. So, we have an amendment that basically puts in the dollar amounts that we talked about in the original amendment, the motion that we just passed, DKD. If there's no further discussion or conversation or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion, the amendment passes and now we're at the motion to approve policy DKD-r as amendment, amended. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. We're done. New business, administrative committee assignments. Did you have more that you wanted to talk about on that? You mentioned it earlier in the program.
What I had to share is what I had to share, but I can reiterate if you'd like.
If you'd like to elaborate or just reiterate?
Sure. Just real quick, for our committee assignments, for our curriculum, we have Dr. McKinney, who is gonna be heading that up and being the chair of that committee. For policy, we'll have Donna Fitzpatrick. I will be also joining those committees as well, in addition to having the assistant superintendents chair those committees, so that we're looking forward to, to being, I would say, moving the initiatives that these committees have already been working on forward. Donna, in her previous position, worked on many policies in her former district. So, the committee assignments are nothing foreign to the assistant superintendents or myself, and we're looking forward to that. And Dr. McKinney has worked on many initiatives within the Nashville Public Schools around curriculum and evaluation at the elementary level. And so, he's no stranger to the initiatives that are moving forward within the district. So, we will, I'll work with Dr. Murataki to schedule a time where we can coordinate for the curriculum pieces. And we already have, as of August 15th, the policy. So, that is public right now. Donna's looking forward to that August 15th meeting and we'll get it going for the curriculum pieces.
Excellent. Anybody, any board members, Dr. Murataki, questions?
I, I have a question, just, just to be clear. So, Dr. Fitzpatrick will be lead for curriculum, instruction, assessment, and evaluation pieces?
Correct.
Thank you.
For?
No. For curriculum? No. It's Dr. McKinney.
No, no.
McKinney, oh, right, sorry.
For the, for the secondary principal assignments, I'm sorry, I thought you were referencing the assignments for the assistant superintendents.
Okay.
So, I think that's what you were referring to.
Yes.
So, that I, I said yes.
Okay.
Because you're asking, good.
Dr. McKinney will be in charge correcting myself. So, Dr. McKinney will be leading curriculum, instruction, assessment, and evaluation? Those four items? Or just curriculum and instruction?
So, the, there are two subcommittees that are at question.
That's correct.
All right. So, for the curriculum committee, it will be Dr. McKinney leading that.
Okay.
For the policy, that will be Mrs. Fitzpatrick. Miss Fitzpatrick will be leading that.
Okay.
Now, when you're talking about evaluation and, and curriculum, district-wide, there is some overlap.
Okay.
So, for instance, at the secondary level, Miss Fitzpatrick will be working with high school principals and middle school principals around curriculum evaluation.
Okay.
At the elementary level, Dr. McKinney will be working with elementary principals around evaluation and curriculum and assessment.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have a question? Are you, when we went through this process, you were talking about looking at the different experiences and backgrounds and maybe changing job descriptions in terms of, has that been done or is that in the works?
That's in the works.
Okay.
Like I said earlier, we've been here five days. And working as hard as we can. And working as hard as we can to make sure we're out there, and also making sure that we're responsive to parents and teachers and other administrators. So we are looking into that.
Okay.
You know, one of the things I think is important, and I just want to share this, is that we work as a team, and there's, and that's important. So there's, you know, whether Garth is out of the district, Donna's going to be available. When Garth is not available, Donna can certainly help and be supportive. And when I'm not available, you know, we'll work as a team to make sure we are on the same page. So because of their positions in general, there is going to be some overlap, and that's where the team components come in. But in terms of evaluating principals and being the point person, that, you know, for the secondary, it's Donna, and for the elementary level, it's Garth.
Got it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the board have any questions in that area? Okay, public comment, fifteen minute time. Oops, I'm sorry?
Other new business?
Oh, you have other new business?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We talked about a couple meetings ago, we wanted to discuss mileage reimbursement for the superintendent. Is, last year, we gave per diem to the assistant superintendents when they came back and worked for our district. This year, the budget is short, as Dan Donovan had told us, so I was hoping that the board could take up the idea of mileage reimbursement. I know it's after the fact because we're so slow at getting around to this, but Dr. Mosley came up and gave of his time, innumerable times, and I, just something that the board might want to consider.
My understanding in talking to the chair of HR was that she was going to discuss this at the HR, HR committee level and come forward with a recommendation.
Well, she adjourned quickly and then opened up again for the personnel recommendations, and we never got to that.
No, I, I'm talking about Mrs. Ziem. I'm not talking about Mrs. Oden. Mrs. Ziem and I had a conversation, the, I believe Mrs. Ziem is the.
Chair.
The actual chair. Mrs. Oden's filling in for her this evening, and my understanding that Mrs. Ziem has this on her agenda, and that was an agreement that the two of us had, and, and I haven't had any other conversation with her to the contrary, and so let me talk to her and see what she wants to do.
I guess so. I thought she was supportive when I talked to her.
Well, if I remember correctly, originally, it was before the board, then the chair moved it to committee, and it didn't matter the date because we are still in the middle of July, which the numbers are still being finalized for the previous month and fiscal year. But I understood that action on this had to be taken by the middle of July if we were going to use money from the previous budget year. So there was a sense of urgency to have that done at this time. And I would argue that if it requires a, a motion to suspend the rules and ask this committee as a whole to act on this, then I would so move.
Yes, this has been the rules to allow a motion to be brought forward, right? You're going to.
I'm sorry?
Are you going to ask if we want to do that?
What is the will of the board? What, first, let's come back to the timeline. When do you have to have a, an expenditure to include it in fiscal '17?
By about the 20th or so of July, for last year.
Okay, so we've got time. I expect that there will be at least, where is HR? We, we get sporadically have special board meetings throughout July and August to do the hirings.
The next meeting is August 9th. The next full board meeting is August 14th.
I understand that, but I'm saying we have special meetings that, that are going to be cropping up between, I don't know how frequently, but as, as we get group of hirings put together. And, and we can bring in a special board meeting, and you can get a, you can have a special HR meeting and, and have your discussion. If you have something to bring forward, you can do that. And I would prefer to do it that way, if that's okay. And talking to Mrs. Oden is, I guess, the acting chair.
Certainly, because if we have people coming forward to fill positions, we try to do that as soon as possible to get them filled.
Yep.
So I, I don't think there'd be a problem whatsoever having a, a meeting next week if we had to. We only need to post for two days, so I think next week, we, we absolutely could have an HR meeting to address.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
The members of the committee are here now. The members of the full board are here now. Postponing a decision, a discussion on this for a week to a yet undetermined meeting seems to be putting off the inevitable because the board is going to have to vote on it anyway. We're all here and now, it's been brought up before, it's been delayed twice, now it'll be delayed a third time by waiting for a committee that does not have a scheduled meeting in the timeframe of the 20th. I, I object to the delay, and I, I move that we bring this issue to the board as a whole right now.
I'll second that.
I had a hand over here, Mr. Halliwell, and then Mrs. Oden.
So whenever this has been discussed, it's been discussed in the abstract? And even when it was discussed, just when we brought it up here, I didn't hear a motion. Is there a written motion by the people in the HR committee that they're ready to move forward?
Mrs. Oden, you had your hand up.
No.
No, there isn't.
There isn't? Can I, so can I just?
Uh-huh.
So, you're arguing that the board is delaying this process. You just had an HR committee, which no one brought forward this particular motion. Regardless of how it happened, you had enough members there to have continued the meeting if you wanted to continue the meeting. So then to bring it to this, to the full board and to say, we're somehow dilly-dallying, is not proper.
Mrs. Oden.
I would just like to say, if President Farrington and Mrs. Ziem had a discussion about this, and they determined it was going to HR, unfortunately, Mrs. Ziem couldn't be here tonight. She had another commitment to the, my brother's keeper, of which she is sitting on the board there. I, I, out of respect for her, I wish that we could just send this to the HR committee and have it discussed there. Thank you.
Well, let me just say, because I had, had that conversation with Mrs. Ziem and would reach an agreement between the two of us that that's the way we would do it, and in an effort to try and avoid having all of these things being discussed at the board level, rather than having them be determined at the committee and worked through at the committee, you know, all the details of it, and then bring any, a recommendation forward. You are aware of the timeline that we're dealing with as regards Mr. Donovan, and so I would request that you talk to Mrs. Ziem tomorrow and decide when you want to have a meeting and do that, and we'll, I, as I say, I, I can't imagine, we aren't going to have a special meeting between now and Mr. Donovan's timeline in order to hire more people, which is our primary concern. Dr. Murataki.
I just wanted to say that I am in agreement with Ms. Oden and Mr. Halliwell on this topic.
Okay. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to bring this topic forward to the full board. Is there any discussion in that matter? All those in favor of bringing the subject forward to the full board say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Any other new business?
Yes.
Doctor, uh, no, excuse me, Howard. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Motion to request the formation of a special committee to review the eight characteristics of effective school boards and to discuss the accuracy and timeliness of administration provided information.
Second that for conversation?
Thank you. May I?
Sure.
So in, over the last weekend, our chair sent out a, an interesting article about the eight characteristics of effective school boards, and I thought it was interesting. I think it would be helpful for us as a board to discuss it. I think there are some goals in there that we can actually work to adopt and become part of what our process is, because we are all about process. In addition, I would like to have a discussion at the board about issues that I tried to bring forward that I've not been able to bring forward, namely regarding the accuracy and timeliness of information provided by administrators to members of the board, in particular myself, and to the board in general. And I'm looking for a productive, constructive, collaborative way to have a discussion here because, in my opinion, this is a very serious concern that I have. It has not been addressed. I've tried this, tried at least twice, this is my third attempt, and to avoid discussing this concern, I think, is detrimental to the board's functioning for the long haul.
Mrs. Ziem.
Mrs. Hoence did for purposes of conference discussion. If I could just say, I, I, I think there are two issues there. I'm glad to see that somebody read it. I thought it was interesting, and, but my suggestion would be that we give our administrative team at least another five days to become a little more comfortable in the district. But I think it's a conversation not for the board, but it's a combination that should take place with, with the board and the administration, because it deals with the relationship. As I said earlier, we want to try and develop a collaborative relationship, and so I think rather than have a special committee of the board, it would be more productive if we give them a little time, and then Dr. Mosley and I can, we can talk about a time to schedule a work session or whatever we want to call it, and we can talk about how we can become a more effective board and the collaborative relationship that we want to have with our administrators, and do that whole thing as a, as a group activity, not as a, a committee of the board. So I guess I'm requesting that you withdraw that motion for right now, and, and let us, let them have a little more time to get better situated. But sometime this summer, maybe, if we can work it in on towards the later, latter part of August, maybe, and I say that and say, man, we're going to have new teachers in the latter part of August. But, and, and Dr. Mosley, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think there's a time and place for this. We are certainly, we've been here five days. I don't, I didn't even share that article with Garth or, or Donna, so they're unaware of that as well. So that wasn't done intentionally, it's just, they just got their laptops today, you know? So, you know, you, we're eager to get going and, and start that process of, of governance. I, I think it's a good conver, it's a great conversation. It also ties into strategic planning and where the district wants to go in five years and where you see yourselves as a board, but also how the board sees itself moving initiatives forward for the, for the district. So I would certainly be supportive, very supportive of not having a conversations in bits and pieces, but really having conversation where there is some fidelity around governance, fidelity around connecting the governance to what I would call the initiatives, but also too, there's accountability piece around communication, whether it's through email, whether it's through requests, that, that, but as a board and as administrative team, we have a sense of expectations and accountability, and when that doesn't happen, certainly, what are the protocols for that? So certainly, I'd be more than happy to entertain that and to be a part of it.
Thank you. If it pleases the board, I would, would like to withdraw my motion at this time.
Thank you. Is that all right with you, Mrs. Hoence?
I will withdraw, may I second?
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Public comments? Wow. Board member comments, which we started over here before, we'll start over here. Mrs. Oden.
What a nice start. It's eight o'clock. This is probably.
Come on.
Shortest board meeting I have ever attended and been part of, so thank you all very much.
Mrs. Hoence.
Thank you. I would just like to say to the Led Street community to reassure them that we are working on solving that problem. Not that we have anything to tell anyone, but I keep hearing from people, parents and teachers in that school, and I know it's hard for them to wait so long, and I apologize for that, and I just want to know that, that this board has been meeting multiple times and is trying to solve this as fast as possible.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Welcome again to our new administrative team. I like saying team. And again, anything, I'll speak for myself, obviously, anything I can personally do, but I think it's the will of the board to, as we've already said, to be, everybody succeeds here, especially our kids. So thank you very much.
Nothing? Dr. Murataki?
I'm sure that our students and our parents are eagerly looking forward to the start of school again in the fall.
Oh, man.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Well, I attended the first day of summer school today at Fairgrounds Elementary, and it went off very well. And I'll be working with them on Wednesday, doing some tutoring, and also with Amherst Street on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I'm going to be busy this summer, and I'm going to enjoy it, I'm sure. But welcome, we're, we're off to a start, at least for summer school.
Okay, I would point out that the reason this meeting is so short is there were very few, very few committee meetings. So maybe we've stumbled onto a, a solution here. And just very briefly, the characteristics of, of an effective board, I thought that there were some, some really interesting points in there about, and as I think I said in the email, it's, it's good for us as individual board members, not in a, around the table, but just you sitting there reading it, seeing how many of these things do apply to us and don't. And then there was a list of ten or twelve things that are negatives, and how many of those do and don't apply to us in the way we conduct our business. But that's for a conversation later. Well, look at this. Mr. Halliwell.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded, seconded by, I'm sorry, did you have something else?
No, I said second.
Okay, so, well, Dr. Murataki beat you to it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Were adjourned at eight oh two.